Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the last meeting of 2017 for the High Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room and now join us as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Bellafield. The applicants are seeking approval to erect a 133-room, five-story hotel at the site across from the Clooney Institute. Megan motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Would you like me to turn the table over? Turn the speaker over to you guys first.
As we continue on our journey here to get this great project approved, we're very close. And I have quite a few notes here and talking points. And if you like me, I can go through them really quickly. I can show you what we did on the plan, that kind of thing. Okay. Chris, why don't you go to the site plan? And do you have the laser? Hand me the laser.
As a preface, I want to point out that the applicant's representatives have literally been turning on a dime on a daily basis. That includes the attorney, the engineers, everybody. I haven't seen this kind of fast dialogue go back, I think, ever. It certainly kept me on my toes. And Larry has incorporated a lot of the public comments we heard, as well as D.C. planning, some of those as well he'll be going over. Thank you.
Okay. The site plan, I'm going to go through the changes. And then I know, as you have reviewed all the comments that come in in our response letter, any follow-ups that you want me to do, I'll do that. But the main, the main changes, and again, I can't remember if I went over this last week, but this is the Roosevelt property boundary. And there's that lighter line is the buffer. Our road originally kind of came down and then swept up like that. So we moved everything east. North is this way. We moved everything east to avoid that impact completely. So all that worked out well. You probably can't even notice what we did here because this fits in so smoothly. We made this a three-way stop. Other things we did, Dutchess County wanted us to add a crosswalk here, which we did. So there's just the one walk on this side and come down here that way or go across and come down. Of course, this is all set up for future expansion, and these sidewalks would continue like that. From a layout standpoint, the other change we made was over here. When this was staked out in the field, Pete picked up on it, but the center line was too far west in this direction. So we moved it 20 feet, Pete. Center line moved 20 feet. That looked like that would fit in there real nicely with the existing topography. So from a layout, that change, and this change here with crosswalk there, crosswalk there. Landscape-wise, which, it's not really necessary, Chris, to go to the plan, but we changed the, we went with the recommendation of the minimum caliber size to three inches. So you'll see that in there. And those are the trees that are around the hotel, you know, to give it a better scale. On the lighting, what we did was, the comment was to take the, I guess we had the light kind of coming down, down the fixture, recess it up into the fixture, which is what we did. And by doing that, we were able to change the, the output of the light with going with the new spec. And by doing that, we, their other comment was scaling down these lights that were on the east side of this road. And with those new lights, we were able to actually take them out. So those 16-foot pole lights are now out. It's all scaled down to the 12-foot poles which come along here. I believe we even took these out here, too. These four remain here at 20 feet, and we double up them. So we removed poles by doing that. We've worked quite a bit with D.E.C. And after our last meeting, Michael and I went and met with them that Thursday. And that following Monday, we were on-site collecting more data, and then made a smittle back to them that Thursday, which meant they had a very short time to complete their review. But we did get their review today, or a letter today, asking for a little additional, more information. But basically said they're going to issue a no-effect letter, and that as far as they're concerned, Seeker should be closed. So that was a, a big hurdle to, to get by. And thank you again, Michael, coordinating getting that meeting set up. Before we get into the noise, and I asked Chris Laporta, who works with Stuart Messenger in our office, to get him brought up to speed on it. Of course, Jennifer's been in the loop, and he is. And if you wanted to have discussions on that, he's available to do that. With DOT, as you know, again, Michael attended a meeting with us, I think this was in the spring.
It was.
Yeah. So it was a while ago. We sat down with them. We had a follow-up meeting to scope the traffic impact study, what they wanted us to do. We did it. We were able to get it done before the school was out, and the date of that was, was June. We had follow-up comments from them that were not secret-related. They were satisfied with that. They were more technical in nature, and we responded to their November comments. And then we got another comment letter back that we're working through right now. The big comment that they're suggesting is to move the center line of the main access down 12 feet to align it up, the through-drives to line up. So we're talking to them about that. Yeah, it's, it's right there. But just so you know, their comment under general permit comments, number one, I'll just read it, says, "Please remove the issued for New York State approval, not for construction on the plans. The purpose of this process now is to permit construction activities in the highway right away." They're, they're ready for the real thing. And so that's what we're doing with them right now. And with that, if you want the noise thing, Chris--
Let me start, let me start first, then. Today I had a conversation with John Petronella, who's actually Rebecca Crist's higher-up. John is in charge of the permitting coordinator for D.E.C. He told me this was at about 4:00. It was prior to us receiving Ms. Crist's letter. He also told me, and I want to get this into the record, that the email would be coming. But in essence, they had found that there would be no take, no take required, no incidental take for the planning's turtles. The information that they requested, having read Ms. Crist's letter, is basically just some, I said it's like meat on the bones. You sent kind of a skeleton, they want a little more meat on it, meaning they want to know who's going to be out there doing the education, show us the pamphlet, show what they're going to show to educate the workers, and who's going to be out there once a week to monitor. I think that's pretty limited information, so I feel that having, him submitting so we can conclude secret based on D.E.C. information is probably what we need. The change in lighting, I want to address real quickly. I spoke, or rather, I was emailing back with Ms. Weiser earlier. When we were doing a couple of fueling stations earlier in the last few years, you used to have where the roof goes over, where the roof or canopy is going over, a fueling area. It used to be big, broad fluorescent lights. It just lit everything, and it bled out everywhere. It was pretty terrible. The first time that we saw newer plans, where they now have pinpoint LED lighting, it created hotspots where we would see, wait, that's seven! But then it went quickly down to zero, like within five feet. This is a little bit analogous to that, because what you've done is you're concentrating more light now, so there's a little bit higher hotspot, we'll call it. The foot candles, I believe, are 3.4. I think the highest I saw was 4.2. But they're in the immediate area of the light pole. This is the lower light pole that we're talking about because of the recessed lighting. And then it fades out fairly quickly, so that it's still going to zero on the other side of the road. And if what I'm hearing correctly is you took out these lights because the hotspots were casting just enough that it's going to be enough lighting for a car as they go through.
Yes.
Good.
Plus, you're not walking on that side.
Right. Well, it's also, in the evening, cars will have their lights. And so you're reducing the overall amount of light and potential light trespass, light glare in every way. We're just creating a little bit brighter light just by the poles themselves. So I want the board just to understand that, because that was fine by me. The other thing that I want to mention, too, with the, something that was discussed sort of by email as well, although the entire board saw it, we had a bit of an issue on the wastewater treatment plant that's not shown here, as well as the water system. Those being designed to the standards for Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. I sent the email out, you guys responded by having conversations with D.C.W.A. the very next day, and it's all been worked out. So thank you. But just so anyone in the audience is curious, this has been envisioned that the County Water and Wastewater Authority would take over the operations of this at some point. And while, you know, Department of Health is the one that's actually reviewing the technical requirements in tandem with New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, D.C.W.A. sometimes looks for other little items that may not be included. And so this is just a way to smooth the transition in the future. So that's been taken care of as well. As I noted earlier, public comments, we've considered them from Ms. Perino Bucow, also from Jeff Anzavino, Sina Cutson, and from D.C. Planning, and from John Ando of the D.C. Transit Commission. In each case, there have been either project changes made, or you've responded that it's not probably effective at this point, because the hotel is not triggering anything that would require some of what was on, I'll call it their wish list, meaning a new bus stop and a pole for a sign. That's all off-premises. We believe we've already handled that issue, because buses would likely be used by employees, not hotel guests. So, and even if it were, as I'll point out for the record again, the loop system in Dutchess County, you can hail it from anywhere on 9 or 9G, as long as you're on the route. You don't have to go to a bus stop. So if in the event of inclement weather, I think you would, what you would do is pick up the bus and have it drop you off at the entrance and use the sidewalks up the site rather than the trail. So I don't see a reason for you, I don't see a nexus, a true connection here to require the applicant to go beyond what they're already proposing. A quick side comment, it's in your response letter. Under our code, elevations must be shown as part of a plan set, not just in the EAF. So you will need to put those back inside the plan set itself. The landscaping changes, Larry, if you can go back to the earlier site plan around the hotel, tad--
Well, we should have the landscape.
It's okay. I can just show it from here. Ms. Moss and I reviewed everything. There we are.
There we go.
We reviewed this in advance with Mr. Boudreau. Of note, there are shrubs, I believe these are viburnums, that have been added here in a sort of naturalistic fashion. There are more shrubs added here. Again, this is to make it, one should remember, this is all going to be mowed, lawned area now. So it's going to be a more park-like environment, or is what's required by our code, an estate setting. So instead of just lawn and trees, we thought it to even more soften the, the environment, we would add something that would make it, again, look natural and yet somewhat manicured. So shrubs have been added there. Evergreens are here, white pines, more evergreens have been added up higher to, again, mitigate the impacts of the view shed from the apartment complex and from door seats. So I think you're going to have a softer look. All these things were done as changes from the last time that you saw the plans, at least the public was able to see them, in response to comments that they heard from the board. Other item, I think I mentioned it to you, Mr. Boudreau, there was a response left off. It's in response to the endangered threat in rare species, just, and then, this is, these were responses to Morse Associates' last memo.
Yep.
The response number six, there's one line, and then the next sentence is dropped off. I think I already know what the responses are, and I know what the sentence would go on to say. And I think these have already been handled by the D.E.C. for the endangered threat in rare species. But you may want to just go back and look at that.
Wait, what? I just want to make sure I'm in the right spot.
That was on your--
Comment seven under Morse Associates--
It's on your page, it's on your page nine.
Oh, I got it. We have a response with no comment.
We were just going to, we were just going to fill it in for you.
Then there are a number of responses on pages later that were technical to Mr. Sotero that I'm going to just defer to him, because they're a little above my pay grade. That noted, the, I think that the other thing to get into then would be the noise mitigation plan. And if I can start on that as an overall basis, I spent, Ms. Axelston and I spent about an hour speaking with George Schmidt, the sound specialist that the planning board uses. So because I already talked about this, I want to start over again with it. Mr. Schmidt felt very strongly that had he been the consultant with the original lead agency, he would not have used what's in the FEIS, which is evaluating a potential increase of 10 decibels on average, from the pre-construction ambient side to once construction starts. He would have recommended five. That noted, in discussing more with him, he said, "Well, that's just because five to 10 is what you consider to be intrusive, and I would have gone with the more conservative number." He said, "But if you already have 10," he said, "you can stick with that, because, again, construction noise is temporary by nature. It's going to stop when the construction's over." So assuming that the board agrees, that's what we've been using as our sort of data, our baseline to follow, would be that if, once construction starts and they take new measurements, if there's an increase above 10 decibels as, again, average, then we would stick in additional mitigation measures. After some back and forth, we now have a latest revision of the noise mitigation plan. It does have additional mitigative measures. I want to explain to the board now, or not explain, but make sure we're all on the same page, that Seeker wants you to mitigate to the maximum extent practicable, meaning there are ways to contain all noise on this site, but are they practicable? So as someone who also has, fortunate enough to live in New York City, when you go in the city and you see high rises being constructed, there's a lot of noise usually. But they're able, because Manhattan is basically flat now, to hang acoustical curtains around. And for the most part, they dig really deep for the foundations, and so a lot of the rock crushing and those sounds are in a pit. They don't travel out, they travel just straight up. In this instance, it wouldn't be practical to do this. The cost of erecting acoustic fences or sound barriers that are fabric would be exorbitant. In addition, in speaking to Mr. Schmidt, he doesn't even really think they'd be that effective, because of the nature, this is not a flat piece of land. So he's reviewed the noise mitigation plan. I don't have final comments from him, but in essence, what the revisions show is that you would do, you would relocate the rock crusher. It's right now shown about right here. As you go north and east into the site, there's less, there's no housing, there's less and less sensitive factors for receptors for picking up. In addition, if you go all the way north to the site, to St. Andrews Road, there's an additional, another part of Bellafield, I think it's 138-acre parcel over there that's behind the former Stop &amp; Shop. Stop &amp; Shop's empty. You don't have any housing for a long time. So what you propose, in other words, is additional mitigative measures, if it goes above 10 on average, is to relocate the rock crusher first, then to consider some maybe temporary sound baffling wherever the receptor is. We have one near the B&amp;B, one here, and one approximately here, to, again, push, bounce the sound back. I spoke to Mr. Schmidt about this, and he said that's probably the most effective thing you could do, would be to bounce the sound back to the north and east, where, again, there's no one here to listen to it and feel completely annoyed by it. This noted, in the original environmental impact statement, and this is stated in the noise mitigation plan, rock crushing was going to be allowed. This has already been dealt with at a sort of macro level. Some towns just say, "No, no rock crushing, no rock hammering, you're going to have to do this in a different way." But in this case, it was already envisioned. So I think what we've done is we've tried to be extra protective, to say that we've taken this seriously. And as far as I'm concerned, in looking at this, and as someone who's been going back and forth the last two days, Ms. Vantyle, there was one little hang-up I saw that, when it was discussed about how to do the measuring once construction started, just said, "Well, the rock crusher will be on." And she revised the language completely. I forwarded it on to the board, I'm not sure if you had a chance to read it, because there was a lot of stuff going back and forth this afternoon. But she changed the language to say it'll, sort of tried to capture the maximum sound possible during regular routine construction. So it'll be more than just one piece of equipment monitoring. That noted, we're going to cross fingers this doesn't increase 10. But if I've been able to speak quickly but thoroughly to the board, I'm looking to, tonight when I asked for comments, to make sure that you agree that the noise mitigation plan that's proposed now is adequate, because this is also part of Seeker. And I think that we can conclude Seeker at the next meeting. I don't see any reason why not at this point, since we now have D.E.C.'s response, we have full DOT responses. There was nothing Seeker-oriented on that. That was--
Technical.
Technical. I mean, even the movement of the central lane, the way, best I could tell in looking at how the alignment is, I think that's just to make sure that you can take rights out easily, or, and lefts out more easily, out of the CIA side, so that there's not so much of a traffic conflict in through there. So that's not Seeker-related, that's just, again, a design element. I'll let Pete discuss, or cite this to the DOT things, but there, there's a lot in there. They can all just be made a condition of approval to match the DOT, meet the DOT standards, which you have to, any way to get a work permit. So I'll let anybody else weigh in on the noise mitigation plan. Pete's going to discuss it, too, because he also had a conversation with Mr. Schmidt. Any questions from the board on the noise mitigation plan?
Nope.
That was easy.
What was the time restraint for the crushing?
Only on the weekdays, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And in discussing with George, Mr. Schmidt, mitigation, one of the problems is if the noise was above 10 decibels, the increase, and the additional mitigative measures, moving it further away, baffling, whatever, but still can't get the increase down, he said you, you can't do it, it's just not possible. And he said, "Now, you could say, well, then we're going to restrict the hours further, but that actually exacerbates the problem. The longer that, the more, the less time they can do it, the longer it's going to last in terms of months." So clearly, because, again, this is temporary noise, what we'd like to do is to get it done as quickly as possible, get the site leveled, ready to go, and regular construction started.
And about how long do you anticipate this to last?
What? The crushing?
The crushing. Or is that too vague of a question?
I don't really think, I mean--
Yeah.
I'll answer, I don't think he can really answer it, because, you know, until you have a contractor selected, and he knows how he's going to attack, you know, the site and do his operations, you know, and stage everything, you know, he's going to, I mean, any engineer could sit here and say, "Well, we think it's going to take this." But until you get, you know, a contractor on board who's really going to do the job and understands the job--
Even then, he doesn't know how much rock is--
Well, you know, yeah, you know, you're right. I mean, I would--
That's the oven, or--
I mean, I would, I don't know if you guys are going to do some test pits, because I would think, I would think when you want to give this to a contractor, he's going to want to have some idea of, hey, where am I going to be hitting, you know, rocks? I assume for your construction plans, you're probably going to want to do something like that.
Chris and I have been over that property, 75% of it. We were digging holes for just reconnaissance, and we have a fairly good idea where the rock is and where it isn't. And we do have a big cut. Chris, go to the gray, yeah, it's right here.
Well, the other thing, too, is, I assume is ever going to be designing the building and designing, you know, the footings and all that, they're going to, they're obviously going to want to have, you know, a soils report--
Yep.
Geotech report. There's going to have to be, you know, a boring rig out there to do some borings and a report. So, I mean, that's probably like a good time for you guys to do some other, you know, like exploratory--
Yep.
You know, holes, just to define it better for your contractor when that time comes.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're planning to do.
So.
But, but, but just to speak, I'm sorry, because we've been out there so long, digging so many holes. I mean, you can walk and know generally where the rock is going to be. There's some parts of the site, we put that bucket down and, and you hit it right away. There's other parts you can go down 10, 15 feet. This site here, where the hotel is, there's no evidence of, of rock. As you move further north into the west, where our northern drive is going in, there's evidence of rock there. We're going to hit rock to put that northern drive in. And I'm not so sure about here, even though this cut is deep. But one of the next things we need to do is--
You may hit rock in through here, too. You may hit rock in through there, I think, for your stormwater management systems.
Okay.
By the roadway, we'll see.
Yep. Yep. We will do a geotech. We already, Bill's architect has, has given us locations where they want the borings done, so we're, we have a fairly good idea. And once we do that, we'll know exactly the rock take on this job.
Other questions from the board, real quickly?
Another comment about the sound mitigation. It might actually be beneficial to push the times to maybe till 5, because you're going to get the rush hour traffic to increase the ambient noise, and it might not be as noticeable and get done in a shorter period of time.
I think that because the FEIS has the more restrictive standards, we would, at first, I think, need to follow, I'm looking at both the attorneys, that the FEIS is the one that establishes the 8 to 3, and to liberalize that, I would think would mean that we would need to wait until we had the information that the increase was over 10%, and that might be an additional mitigative measure then, if I'm right.
Yeah, I think it's in the Seeker findings--
It is.
--where ours are, so I think we have to stick with that.
One of the reasons why it was, I'm imagining this was selected is because kids come home at 3:00, maybe parents are there, they want a nap. So you're trying to take, you're trying to put the rock crushing, the loudest sounds, in an interval when there are, people are less likely to be home, which is about 8 to 3. I do agree that if, if we need to, if it does break the 10, that's, I mean, the, the noise mitigation plan envisions that first there'd be these certain steps taken, and after that, there'd be a discussion, and maybe that is to increase the hours. And the board could take action on that then, because we would know that there's a greater impact than what was envisioned. Okay. Any other comments or questions for Larry, before I go to the consultants?
Could I just add a little bit of--
Yeah.
Can you guys carry me in that?
Uh-oh.
I just wanted to add a little bit about the sound fencing. I mean, these sound blankets, they're pretty easy to mount to a chain-linked fence. And while it wouldn't be practical to surround the entire site, this rock locatious, this location of the rock crusher will be the same, it's not going to move. So it would be fairly easy to put a fence around that. And these fences, you could mount them on Jersey barriers if you need like a bit taller of a chain-linked fence. So it might be practical to do that if we break the 10-decibel limit.
Okay. One of the issues that, when I was speaking to Mr. Schmidt, was that once you erect something around the rock crusher, you limit the ability of the efficiency of the operations? I mean, you're, you're taking--
They need a big area, they need a big area, you know, to load and bring it, bring in trucks. But again, these are things, I mean, I think Chris is right, and these are all things that if they do go over, you know, we can look at. You know, the, the only thing I would say is, you know, something like that on the fence, is it, is it something, or is it something that's readily available, so it doesn't hold the guy up, you know, for weeks? You know, I mean, because what we don't want to happen, what nobody wants to happen, is go over the 10 and, you know, we try to figure some things out. And if there was, all right, well, let's try some other mitigation measures, nobody's going to want to stop the work. And we don't want that to happen either. So we just need to be careful what we say and how we say it in here. We need to just be a little flexible.
I could look further into that, but being close to New York City, I mean, the stuff, it's just a blanket that you drape on the fencing--
Yeah, I'm just asking, yeah.
--should be available.
I guess I had a question, too.
But keep in mind that when we do get a contractor on board, he, he may decide that the location of that crusher should be in a further remote location, and he'll stockpile rock, you know, until such a point that it makes sense to rent one of these things for the month. So--
That's right.
This is, this is still, you know, this is us trying to figure it out. When we get a contractor, we'll have a better idea.
Keep in mind that it's on the site plan.
Yeah.
Microphone, microphone?
If you want to propose an alternate rock crusher location, so you have that flexibility, then we could have two locations on the site plan. But we just don't want to get in a situation where you have to--
Come back in for an amendment.
--stop work, come in, amend your site plan.
Do we have one now?
Wait, wait, the noise mitigation plan envisions a, possible changes to the rock crusher location through a site plan waiver.
Through a waiver?
Yeah. That's the actual mitigation plan.
Yeah, we need to be flexible on that.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because when we talk about a 10-decibel average increase, that's on top of, if I read the report right, it's like 80, 81 is the decibel limit for a rock crusher, right? That was in that range?
Just was in generate.
Right. And, which is pretty loud. So, and I live east of the, the project there, the Maple Ridge or the River Ridge. And they crushed rock for, I think, three years. the Maple Ridge or the River Ridge, and they crushed rock for, I think, three years. But that was, that was quite the site, and you're going to hear it.
Yeah.
You're going to hear it no matter what, and so, you know, 10 decibels more, it's just, people are going to hear it, at 80 decibels, at 90 decibels, at 70 decibels.
I believe it's 10 decibels above the ambient level. So it's not, it's not, see, this is where, this is where.
That's what I couldn't understand, that's why I was like.
This is where we think that the 10 isn't going to be met, but that's to be seen, because they have to take background readings, you know, existing readings.
Right, and I.
Before any construction starts at the receptor points.
Right.
And that's, you know, the baseline, and then it's 10 above.
Above that.
Ambient.
That's why I was asking.
And it's not, you can correct me, because you seem to know much more about this than I do, but it's not necessarily additive, it's not as though you take this and say, well, the rock crusher is going to produce this added, and that's the increase, because sound travels in different ways, and it's more of an exponential increase than it is linear.
Right, and it talked about distance, you know, reducing that, so when I was hearing it, I was not hearing 80 decibels at my house.
Right.
I was, it sounded like a really loud woodpecker at my house, but I knew it was a rock crusher.
Sure.
But I, the other point is, is that it's actually a very loud site. When I was walking, it's a very loud site. The ambient noise from the road is very loud, especially without the leaves on the trees. I was really stunned, I said, wow. It was just, just the constant noise from the, just from the road.
Highway traffic.
Was, I think the ambient level is going to be quite, quite high.
So again, the purpose of this is just to make sure that we're doing the required hard look, that we're taking this seriously, and for me, I think we've come up with a good plan, and I thank you again for understanding that when I said that, it was, I was just thinking, the way that it was worded, as you said, inelegantly, it just didn't seem like it was going to capture the full sound, and now I think it does. So let me start with the consultants. Mr. Sotero, any other comments?
Just to, just to stay on the noise, just for a second, so, you know, I know in the emails late today, and, you know, Michael had mentioned it about, you know, not, not focusing specifically on the rock crusher, but that there's going to be other construction equipment that's going to be there doing whatever that they're doing. So I assume that it's going to be, you know, revised to like include that?
Kind of phrase, the language already revised.
Yes, yes. Yeah, they were talking about the backup sounds of the, of the equipment.
Okay, so as long, again, oh, so that was already revised, late, I just, I could follow, I mean, after a while, I just said, okay, that's enough.
I know, there was too much going on, but, so what it is, she proposed language that basically says to try to capture the overall sounds.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please do.
Okay, so the new language would read, once construction at the site has commenced, in order to quantify the noise levels at peak operation of the construction site, the project sponsor shall take an additional four samples at the same three locations. Testing shall be done on days representing full operation of construction equipment, and must include operation of the rock crusher or rock hammer in addition to other construction equipment. The assumed sound level for full operations at each of the three locations, this is the location of the sensitive receptors, will be the arithmetic average of the four samples that are taken over two days. So this really makes it clear that we want the whole enchilada.
I mean, we'll discuss it with George, but I'm, I'm pretty confident to say on his behalf that that's going to cover it.
I think so.
So.
Thank you.
But, thank God, boy, there's a lot of emails today. Okay, so we did, we did obviously, you know, receive the updated plans last Friday. Honestly, I didn't have a lot of time, you know, to look at them, but I did go through Larry's, you know, response letter, and knowing, knowing Larry as I know him, if he says that they're done, I mean, we're going to look at them, but he says that he took care of them, he like explained, except for number seven, you didn't have a response. You know, but other than that, you know, I'm confident that we're going to have like minimal, you know, technical comments, and in order to save some paper, my guess is, and we'll get, and I'll get something out early next, you know, week, but, you know, my guess is that let's not do another round of plans that, I guess, we could just make it like a condition to save some paper.
I far prefer that, we'd all would.
We don't want to, I mean, this, this is a big, you know, set, so.
I agree, and.
So as long as the board is all right, I'm pretty confident that anything we're going to have is going to be minor and just leave it as a condition.
I poured over the plans so closely that I can tell you that I found an error, you have 61-inch circumference for a locust when it should be sycamore by the wastewater treatment plant. That's how closely I've gone through everything, and it's the only flaw that I saw, just so you know.
Okay, so my review's done.
No, 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 no. I mean, I spent a lot of hours on it, so, I see Larry making that note, that's that you don't have to change it, don't worry. We know, we know it's an existing tree you're trying to protect. Ms. Paul Darrow, any comments? And by the way, it's nice to have you here, back again from attorney leave, and you made it through the accident that Patrick told us about.
I did, I did, I went around it.
There you go.
I sat there for a while before I realized I should move on.
Okay, thank you.
So our office has been working on the negative declaration, we do have a draft. Unfortunately, with the last minute information at 5:00, it just wasn't able to come together for the meeting tonight, but we don't have any outstanding issues there, and we've also been working on a resolution, and so hopefully in the next two weeks, we'll be able to work with the engineer and the applicant's consultants on the conditions of approval.
And I've, I've reviewed the draft neg deck, I've reviewed the, we have two resolutions we've been working on. One is a resolution that would authorize selective tree removal if DEC authorizes this because of the tree inventory you said. I did tell Mr. Petronella today, who was delighted, that one of the changes that's been made is, since we're going to be removing trees that are suitable for Indiana bats and northern long-eared bats, we're actually putting in trees in the landscaping plan that will have exfoliating bark that will be suitable habitat for them, and he said, nobody does that. That's Hyde Park for you, at any rate. So then the third resolution would be a resolution, a condition resolution of approval. I forwarded those on to Mr. Sotero's office and Ms. Axelson, and they probably haven't had a chance to go through because it was a busy day, but they'll be looking, I want them to look to see if there's any conditions as well that need to be added before the next meeting.
I mean, since that drafting, there are additional conditions that need to be added, so.
I figured that.
Shocking, right?
Yeah.
But the good news is, is that we're getting.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that January 3 actually can, we can get through everything here, so. Anything else, Ms. Paul Darrow?
I had one other thing, I think when we met the other day, Michael, we, you know, I chatted a little bit about potential for a site restoration bond. We do that, we do that in other, other towns on, or other towns do it on larger, you know, projects, and, you know, the thought is that, and I'm sure, I'm sure that's not going to happen here, but if, if the developer starts the project, moves around a bunch of earth, like disturbs, disturbs stuff, and for whatever reason the project is like abandoned, if there's any, if there's any potential erosion control issues that, you know, are left there, especially with towns that are an MS4 community, that if there is like an erosion problem, if the project was abandoned, then the town is really a little bit on the hook because of the fact of we're an MS4 and we have a plan and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, we threw that out at the meeting, and how the rest of the board feels, I mean, we're not talking, you know, we're probably, if I had to make a guess, we're talking about a bond of maybe, you know, for this site, I don't know, between 50 and 100,000, maybe, and probably on like the lower end of that. And, you know, and that's just in case that it happened, it was abandoned, the town identified some serious erosion control problem, that the town would have the right to go in, if the developer did not act on our request to stabilize the site, that the town would have the ability to call, you know, the bond and go make the improvements necessary to secure the site and make sure that there wasn't an erosion issue, so.
So colleagues, this is something that I neglected to send out to you, I apologize.
You did have a couple other things.
Would, would the bond be until the entire site is developed, or once this particular building?
No, we would just.
It would be tied to the set phase one A.
Okay.
Because we don't know when, when they're.
Right.
This would just be for this one particular project.
And this is, John, generally speaking, with larger sites, where the amount of soil removal, et cetera, might be so much that you would have a real erosion problem, so this is just something to consider from the board, this could be made as a condition. Thank you for bringing that back up. Before I go to my colleagues, I forgot one point that I wanted to make, I apologize to the applicants. If you can go to the wastewater treatment plant slide. Okay, there are lights proposed here, they are the Cobra lights, they're proposed on, believe only on this side, they go up to here. I want to make a couple of points, first, this does not comport completely with, the entrance is not comport completely with the concept plan, I don't seem to have much battery in this. Right there, there's a super imposition, you can see that it's, the road doesn't exactly align, but more importantly, there's supposed to be a median down the middle that was landscaped, and there's, there are envisions to be sidewalks all along at least some sides, because there is proposed development here, here, and here. The roadway will conflict with some of what was approved conceptually, but there's supposed to be, as I said, sidewalks along here because there's other development. This noted, it's up to the board whether we want to require this to be done now like it was supposed to be, or if you're comfortable with it being like it is. Ms. Moss and I, in discussing this, just the two of us, we're thinking that this isn't, it's not, the time is not ripe, we'll call it, to put in the sidewalks, because you don't actually want to encourage people to walk up here to go to a wastewater treatment plant. But the applicant needs to understand that a future board, even this one, at some point when other development is proposed, can say, we want sidewalks along both sides of the road, in which case you may need to change the lights to the pedestrian style, or have the board consider allowing those to stay there. And a future board could say, no, we want this to be a planted median in between, or we can just accept it. This is up for discussion with the board tonight, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, that's all.
So the issue is that the pedestrian lights would be appropriate.
Over a sidewalk.
Sidewalks are going in.
Yeah, so that's really it. And again, these, I hadn't seen the lights that were shown there at the time, and Larry, can you just discuss briefly what this is going to look like, per se?
Where you.
The, what the components will look like of the wastewater treatment plant?
So.
Normally, we would ask for elevations or what's going to cover it.
Okay.
But this is a little bit more, this is a little bit of a unique case.
All of this is underground, all these guys here, these one, two, three are above ground, this is a gen set, so it's a.
Oh, could you move the microphone, please?
Yeah.
All right, so this, this is the phase one, so this is the first plant we're going in, this is above ground, it's a container that'll, I mean, I can get you pictures of it, and it's a unique way, this will be built offsite and then delivered to the site, you know, completely intact, so when we get our approval, we'll have all the underground in, we come in and drop this in, and we're ready to go. So this is generator here and some other equipment, but all of this is underground. Of course, this is nine here, this is the berm that blocks all of this, and when we did the sidewalk, there's some nice sycamores through here, we're not going to be able to save all of them, and as a result, in the landscape plan, you'll see that we put back in the sycamores, three inch, uh, two, two to two and a half inch caliber through here. This area here is a stormwater practice, it'll all be grass and let to grow out, there's some screening here that we put, again, so there's a stormwater practice there, and this is the 61-inch sycamore here that we realigned this road to, to save it, and there's probably sycamore right here, one of the larger ones that we're able to save too. So these are the ones that we're adding here. So you'll, this building here is about 10 feet high, it'll be earth tone in color, and again, it looks, it's, it's a container that would be on a.
What's in there all, you know, treatment equipment, process equipment?
Yep, it's all in there.
Aren't you going to need, aren't you going to need a small, you know, building for storage of some maintenance tools? There's, I assume there's got to be like a lab, not, not like a lab, but a place where the operator can do his work and.
Yeah, we, we have that room in here, but that is an interesting question, because we're getting comments back from, from DOH on another project that they want a larger room, so we'll, yeah, that's plan four.
Yeah, I think, I think you're going to need a small building just for like an operator, like office, lab, I don't know about a lab building, but.
We, we have that in there, it's all in there.
It's in there now?
Yep.
In that container that they plop down?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Do we have floor plan?
Yeah, I can get you the floor plan.
No, no, I mean.
Well, the floor plan and the elevation.
That's not necessary for the planning board.
We should, we should have the elevation on file.
Yeah, we should have something as to what it's going to look like.
Right, I mean, we've seen these before, containers.
Is the elevation on the plan?
That's what I thought.
I think I had to put it on the landscaping detail sheet, I was just running out of places to put that.
Do we have it on here?
I don't have it on.
Okay, so it's in the plan set, and we'll put the buildings in the plan set as well.
Pardon me? Their current position on sidewalk? Oh, they didn't respond, that's, I mean, I don't think it's, as I said, for me, I'm not sure it's ripe, because to put in sidewalks right now would seem to encourage people to walk to a place we don't want them walking to at all.
Chris, where do we have the gate? We put a gate over here.
Yeah, I asked you to put a gate at the main entrance too, at the, at the property line.
I think it's here.
Somewhere's in there.
Just behind the tracking pad.
All right, so here's a tracking pad, so it's right here.
Yeah, because we don't want any, I mean, you don't want anybody to even go in there, get anywhere close to the place, except for, you know, the operator, obviously.
So there shouldn't be a question about sidewalks.
Right, but does it make sense to put the right light fixture in now, so that in the future, you don't have to change it?
That's why I brought it up for you, it's up to you guys, so it's just, you're kind of proceeding at your own risk. Again, this is assuming that the concept plan that shows all the development in these other areas would be followed, because it's meant to be dense, compact, and walkable. And it may be that a future planning board says, no, we only want a sidewalk on this side, because this would encourage you to walk over there, I don't know, I just wanted to bring it up for everyone to, just for discussion.
Surely they're calling.
So let me start to my left, Ms. Weiser, comments?
I do agree that now isn't the time to put in sidewalks.
Thank you. Are you comfortable with the 10 as opposed to the 5 increase?
I am, I'm comfortable with 10, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
I agree about the sidewalks, are you going to subdivide the parcel off?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay, eventually you'll have to, right?
Correct.
This helps speed this, the hotel process by not having to perform the T Corp, the Tristech Corp preparation, et cetera, so, they withdrew, there is a subdivision that's been withdrawn.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Pickett?
I agree with no sidewalks, and we had quite a discussion, started in the beginning of the week with regards to the sound mitigation or whatever, I think, with, everything that's gone around has been very collaborative, and the speed and the timing and the responses from everybody, I'm impressed, so I think we're good with it.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
I agree with the, about the sidewalks not being needed, and I also agree that the applicant should decide what they want to do about the lights.
If you leave them as is, then just remember there, it could be that there would be a wrangling at some point in the future.
Yeah, and I just also want to agree that my head is spinning with the amount of, of, of data that has been flying by in the last week, and I just, really, it is, I've never seen this before, I'm just so impressed, because I, when I first read your email, I went, oh, it's probably another four weeks. And so to be sitting here tonight and having everything worked out, I'm just, I'm blown away.
Thank you.
I'm very impressed.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
I'm going to echo my colleagues regarding the sidewalks, and, I mean, the turnaround time on everything's been impeccable, and, and just to take it one step further, I think when this section of the site gets developed, we've seen how the landowners and the architects and engineers work to make everything, you know, not just aesthetically really nice, but function really well, I think that, you know, they're going to do the due diligence to get the sidewalks and the lighting right at that time, so thank you.
Ms. Napoli?
So well put. I concur about the sidewalks, I would also add, thinking about adding the lighting now, not knowing what's happening down, down the road, the breakneck speed, if, if people had like 12-hour shifts if they were working, I don't see how they could have kept up this past week with all the info going back and forth along the way. But it is, truly is a remarkable feat from the beginning of this project, of how well everyone has worked together, and just gave and give and take and shared, is, is very encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none. There being none. Ms. Polidoro, is it ripe to close the public hearing since we should be considering final approval at the next meeting? I don't think we're gonna get any new information.
Given that
That's substantive.
All substantive information's been received, there's no subdivision application. I see no issue with closing the public hearing tonight.
Make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, so we'll put you on the agenda for January 3. Is this, so Mr. Boudreau won't be here at the January 3 meeting?
Oh.
He had the same sound when I said, "Do you want this January 3?" But I think that the applicants would prefer to see us take action on the 3rd rather than the 20th. Mr. Hoi, you better be nodding strongly there, yeah.
Yeah, right, and it's, and it's, it's pretty much teed up, ready to go. I've got my stuff all done, basically, so...
So I personally want to take a break from this application for two days.
Yeah, but we miss Larry.
No, I'll be happy to, to have us all focus on this the week followed between Christmas and New Year's, but this really, I've been chained to this, along with a couple of other applications, called the enclave back over there, along with Victoria. So, assuming that we can get everything through, we'll have, we'll update our drafts of everything, make sure that all our consultants, all the board has kind of waited informally to say, "Yeah, it looks fine," and then we'll pass the drafts back over to your side for final kind of look-through, and then we'll consider action on all the NECDAC and the two resolutions at the next meeting. Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Bill and I will definitely be here on the 3rd. Yes.
Bill, if you don't want to fly in, you don't have, or drive all the way over, you don't, I know, you don't have to.
There won't be discussion, per se.
No, I mean, there, it's, it won't, there's no public comment. We're not gonna, it's gonna just be as-is.
Sounds good.
And you'll be able to see it in advance.
Yeah.
We'll miss you too. Have a happy holiday.
It's kind of where we go every second Wednesday.
Thank you.
See you next year.
Right, that's right. The next item on the agenda is Creek Park Mobile Home. The applicants are seeking approval to add a 22nd home, 22nd mobile home in an area where there has been none before. We held open the public hearing for this meeting, so make it a motion to open the, reopen the public hearing.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we had a new plan set for Mr. Pavel, Pavel?
Pavel.
Pavel. Okay, see, I've been mispronouncing it. Mr. Pavel, he responded basically to our comments. He rejiggered the proposed landscaping. I think he did a great job. This new version actually takes advantage of existing vegetation. And I didn't really have any, and looking at the plans I had in other comments, I appreciate that you note, you responded point by point by point to comments from Morse Associates, as well as to comments from the planning board, because those were included in the Morse Associates. We have a resolution, we're prepared to take action tonight. First, any comments from the consultants?
Not me.
Ms. Polidoro?
No comments.
Any comments from the board?
No. No.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Christmas comes early tonight for you, Mr. Pavel.
I like that.
I, I want to point out that, again, for the record, we did have a number of neighbors speak about drainage issues, but none of those are impacted by the addition of one new mobile home. It's not enough. But Mr. Sotero is following up with the Department of Transportation, because it seems, basically, a culvert was installed on the west side of 9G. It goes across to the east side, then where that goes, it goes underneath the Creek Road stub, I guess I'll call it, and then it converges to another drainage swale, and that goes on down to Creek Road, the Creek Road property that goes north and south. And so there's just a convergence of issues in through here, and this is also, this is, the flooding and ponding mostly seems to be occurring on town property. So it's a matter of also Mr. Sotero contacting our superintendent-elect to discuss this, to see if there's anything we can do to alleviate the situation. So, who has this file? I do. Thank you, Chris.
Resolution granting site plan approval, Creek Park Mobile Home Park, Resolution 2017-41A, whereas, 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 whereas. Whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board approves a site plan for the project and authorizes the chair or is authorized, as need assigned, the site plan after the compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, approval of Dutch County Department of Health and of the sewage disposal system for the new double-wide home. Three, revision of site plan to include the distances to the property line from existing mobile home pads 6, 10, and 21. Four, revision of the site plan to include a note stating that sheds partially located off the applicant's property near pads 19 and 24 are existing conditions, and that the planning board does not grant any approval of the shed's existence or placements by approving the site plan. Five, revision of the site plan's mobile home size table to include the maximum dimensions for the proposed homes on pad 6 and 21. Six, add notation at the bottom of the bulk table to allow the addition of a peaked roof to flat-roofed homes to any increase in living spaces.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Do you want to copy the resolution for your records?
Please.
You can have mine. And it's emailed to you tomorrow anyway, but this will make it easier for you. Otherwise, this was quick and easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We are now out of public hearing mode. The next item on the agenda is a workshop for Hyde Park Town Center North. This is the home of the recently approved new Mavis, where we see construction going on right now, excitingly. Mr. Alexander is here to present or not present?
My colleague, Ms. Leibert is a couple minutes away, so it seems like an appropriate time here to let the church go ahead of us.
We'll be happy to.
That was good. That was nice.
Typical or making something.
We'll be happy to. So, we have an application for a... Ah, you're the gentleman who came in. Okay. So we have a copy of an application for a new sign for Hyde Park Baptist Church. Everyone's had an opportunity to see it. It's code compliant. Ms. Moss just needs the recommendation for us to authorize her to give the permit, and the resolution's already written. Any questions or comments for the individuals before us? Go ahead and state your names for the record, by the way.
Alex Valentine.
Richard Murray.
And are you a pastor at the church?
Pastor.
That's what I thought, okay. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And any questions for the applicants? Nope. Who has this file? Mr. Murphy?
Resolution number 2017-35. Whereas, 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 be resolved that the board hereby recommends the zoning and this, during issue with the sign permit for the Hyde Park Baptist Church is submitted by Richard Murray on December 5, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You can get your signed permit. Good luck. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Have a good Christmas.
We, I'm sorry you had to wade through this.
That's all right.
Okay, because if you'd have called, we'd have told you you don't have to be here for these, if it's code compliant.
We do that, but we wanted to...
Oh, okay, good, okay, good. Looking forward to seeing the new sign there on 9G. Thank you. Since Ms. Leibert is not here yet, and Mr. Tyrums is not here either, then let's go ahead and take care of some other, has everyone had a chance to review the board minutes from November 1st and 15th?
Yes.
Make it a motion to approve both.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Has everyone had a chance to review the consultants' contracts for 2018?
Yes.
So, I'd like a motion to allow me to sign the contracts with Rodent House and Shaw, our attorneys, as well as Morse Associates, but just a quick note, the town has done RFQ, or RFP, or something for engineering services. When the board was, when Supervisor Ward and a majority of the current board was first elected, they didn't do an RFQ or P, and apparently that can sometimes cause problems down the line with reimbursements or something, so...
For grants.
Yes, for grants. So periodically, they need to do this, so they're doing it, and the way the RFQ is written is it was both for town board and planning board services, so they closed, I think, the date to receive them by late January or something?
I don't know, I haven't seen it yet. Oh, I assume I'm gonna get one. I hope they weren't, I hope they weren't sent out yet.
Maybe.
I guess if I don't, then...
Wait, doesn't the RFQ just get posted on a website? It doesn't get mailed to people, does it?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know what, I don't know what to do.
Okay, call Town Hall tomorrow and see, because we, we don't really want to have a big interruption in services.
Yeah.
I don't think they get mailed out for Dutch County Community College.
I mean, how would somebody know? I mean...
It's posted on their website that there's, people sign up to receive these, these, when they're posted, RFQs, RFPs.
And it's probably hidden legal notices, right?
Oh, you're talking about on BidNet. Oh, we get, oh, we get, we get BidNet at our office.
Oh, so this is something different?
No, it's a way that, you can, you can go advertise through there, so...
Okay, I'm sorry, I know that...
And if, and if, and if the person who monitors our BidNet-like notices did not see this, if it went out, they're gonna be in trouble tomorrow.
It'd be a bad...
Well, the town board authorized this a while back, I think like two weeks ago? A week ago?
Yeah, but I don't know if they got together the RFP and it went out. I'll check. We got it, we're good.
Okay, never mind. Let me just say...
We're good.
So the contract that Mr. Sotero prepared for me to sign is just for January and February.
Okay.
Of note, neither consultant raised their prices whatsoever from the prior year, we checked, so we're all okay. So make it a motion to authorize me to sign.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
But can you unclue?
Hmm, I guess we're gonna have to somewhat start with, Mr. Tyrums is not coming to...
Why can't we start with the enclave?
Oh, we can.
Yeah.
Where is the enclave?
Right here.
Oh, no, no, no. So, Mr. Alexander, come on up, and we'll, and Ms. Patty, come up, we'll discuss the enclave real quickly. I sent an email out to my colleagues explaining basically what needs to be done, so if I can really simplify that. Originally, we carved out, I'll say, a special way for the applicant to start creating one building, one mobile home, that would be used for sales. We had multiple meetings with Mr. Westermeyer, our building inspector, and, yeah. And, in essence, because this would not have water and sewer, he has to sort of carve out in his own head a special way to get a building permit for a building that's not habitable. The applicants have jumped through all the hoops they needed to, et cetera. At the time, Mr. Westermeyer mentioned to me afterwards, but never really specified it, that he thought that they also needed to go, to proceed with the water and the wastewater plants as well. I did not think that they, we needed to adjust the resolutions because they had prior building permits pulled for these. They were expired, but they were tied to a former subdivision. Because we're re-subdividing, and it's now through site plan as well, he would like for them to be able to start with the water and wastewater, which they need
Yes.
in order to start the rest of the construction, he wants them to do that early on as well. None of this is being done before all conditions are met, it's just that it's, they need to pull these building permits quickly. So we're prepared to revise the original resolutions to allow both those, or to allow those to happen simultaneous with the model home. In the meantime, because if you're gonna be starting the water and wastewater, and all the other existing homes have to be demolished before any of this starts, one is being retained for the clubhouse, so it became, well, if we're gonna start the water and wastewater, why don't we go ahead and convert the clubhouse to, or the single-family residence into the clubhouse, or membership club? So that's what all this was about, in essence, and I should also add that Mr. Westermeyer strongly encourages them to turn that single-family residence into the clubhouse as soon as possible.
Yes.
How's that?
Perfect prelude. That was excellent. It was excellent. The only thing I would add, or a couple little, quick little things, is, one thing is, all of the other houses that need to come down are down.
Everything's gone.
They're done.
I knew that.
I didn't go by, thank you.
So, and, and a lot of this also is coming out of it. I know it was a lot of heavy paper going back and forth. Thank you. Like, thank you. Because, I, I don't know, most people lose a step when they come back from returning. I think you gain three. I don't know how that's possible. But it's really appreciated to reiterate that. There was a lot of back and forth, but another part for the board to get some comfort here is we had about a two-hour meeting with the town attorney, supervisor, one, at least one of the town board members, plus your staff, and that's how some, a lot of this came out. What's happening is, is we get deeper into the, into the season, and the hope here is to be coming out with sales in the spring, and then we had spent so much time on getting that pad done, and we're, we're still hoping, but also to give us the flexibility that if we can't get the pad done because the weather turns on us, then we could do the membership club as we do the sewer and water. Sewer and water are mostly in, so a lot of it really is more electronics. What we're finding out, unfortunately, is that all the stuff that was in there is not really out, it's, it's outmoded, and retrofitting it is turning up the cost almost more than actually ripping everything out and going with best practices today. So, really, most of these changes you'll see all really arrived after filed map and relate to the building permit phase that we spent so much time, and then a lot of it, the last-minute changes really are nomenclature to get the references to doing, remember, we spent all that time doing construction phasing plans? And we just really realized, all of us, dawned on us, actually, Nicole saved us, and said, "Wait, we have a construction phasing plan, why don't we reference everything back to that?" So that's really what the lift is about in the end. It's not what we have to do before filed map, it's what after the filed map. And then we've been working, we're gonna, we got, I think we're just about this close on the form of agreement for all the bonds and everything, so we're, we're just about cooking with gas here. So, that's kind of what it's all about.
Are there any questions for the applicants from the board? Right side, left side? Sure?
Just wow.
To sum it up, we're just changing the timing of a few of the conditions.
That's basically it.
It, it was quite an exercise, though, to, to map the, you know, the site plan changes and read it back, and so the, you're, both you're...
Kat and I sat at Town Hall today with the maps for a little while and, and tried to sort it out, so...
Is that when you told me to...
But, but your discussion helped to kind of...
Leave the bonds for a moment?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there being no other questions, any comments from the consultants? Yep. By the way, that was a marathon meeting, if I do say so myself, and I came in for the end of it.
Wow.
Because I didn't think I was required to be there, and it probably helped because there were questions for me as soon as I sat down. But, and Victoria came in late. Pete endured the whole way through.
We browbeat him because we only had, like, an hour. So we had to browbeat him to keep moving.
At any rate, this is a very lengthy resolution that's in bold. Is there any way that I can-
You can stipulate that everyone's read it and just say, motion to adopt the resolution to amend the conditions of final plot approval.
And if you guys want me to do my Evelyn Wood speed reading, I can.
No, no, no.
But there are literally seven pages. Seven.
I mean, it's basically the same conditions the board has read.
It's just changing one.
It's just changing the order and adding, basically carving out the, the membership club earlier.
And adding the, adding the language for the phases, the construction phases, so that we're very clear about what's tied in in terms of construction phasing, so.
Did you have any other comments now that you've read it?
So, taking, we had no comments at all on the amendment to the subdivision plot.
Okay.
And I think we're probably, like, at this point, just, like, being incredibly over-concerned and just want it on the record. I don't know if it has to be in the resolution. And I think the chairman made it, made it clear. We're gonna be filing for sewer, water, model home, and membership club. All four elements at the same, you know, upfront, and that's what the change is about. So it's, in addition to the fact that you had previously said, go ahead with regard to the model home, go ahead with the membership club, and then Don's asking us to do sewer and water. So I just, it doesn't, I mean, we can, I don't think we need to add it anywhere. I think the record's clear, and we have meeting minutes and video and all those things.
So does everyone have a chance to read resolution 16-49, which is the resolution to amend the conditions of site plan and special use permit approval?
Yes.
That's good, yes.
Then stipulated so read, and make it a motion to approve resolution 16-49G. So moved.
Second.
You all went too fast for me.
Oh, yes.
That was moved by?
I believe that was Diane and seconded by Chris.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Yes.
Did you just say 49G only?
16-49G.
We have F too, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we need to go in that order? F then G?
We have plat-
Yes, we should do F before G for, otherwise the resolution letters are gonna get switched.
Then, that's been, that's been, wait, that's been motioned and seconded, but we'll, we'll table the vote for a moment. In the meantime-
So we're going, going over to special permit site plan?
No, to final plot.
To final plot. Do final plot first. Yeah, I agree.
So I'm gonna move this.
No, you have to stipulate the wheel rid.
Yeah, I can do this one. This one is fast, Chan. This is resolution 16-49F. A resolution to amend the conditions of final plot approval for the meadows, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby amends resolution 16-49C by deleting the building permit condition and replacing with the following new condition. Be it further resolved that should the final plot be filed, the following shall be required prior to issuance of a building permit on any lot on the subdivision plot for any habitable structure excluding the membership club, model home, and water sewer structures. One, evidence that all deeds, easements, restrictive covenants, and offers of session have been duly recorded with Dutchess County Clerk to acceptance for filing of the HOA by the Attorney General. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ann. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now a vote on 16-49G that's already been moved and seconded. Make it a vote to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Wow.
A holiday came early for you guys, too.
Can you read the numbers back to me?
16-49F and 16-49G. Oh, wait, I gotta sign these.
Okay, great.
Ms. Patty, have a happy holiday.
Thank you.
We're very efficient in working today. Nice to hear that, in this year of the woman, that a woman's the one who saved the day.
Thank you.
Read very well.
As always.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, do it ten times. Lift it ten times.
It doesn't seem to be working. I apologize.
Okay, I have a laser. Okay. Good evening. And my apologies.
Hello.
Kelly Leibl with KRC Planning.
And Neil Alexander from Cuddy and Feder.
We just want to give you a kind of a brief overview of what is going on up at the Hyde Park Plaza. I'm sure you guys drive by every day. As you know, you approved the site plan some time ago for the new Mavis building. Oh, now it's working?
It's looking very good.
For the new Mavis, but, thank you. I think it, it does look very nice.
I can see the sidewalks around where the garden's going to be. I see the electrical for the clock. It's looking fantastic.
It is. It's really comfortable.
I see the gardens being done in front.
In your head.
Yes. Well, other people must be seeing it also because there's interest in the site, which is great. That's what we want.
Oh, excellent.
Really, before you.
Excellent.
So you approved the site plan, if you recall, several months ago, and we really focused on the area around Mavis. And if everyone remembers, I'm sure that you painfully do, there were some components of the plan that we didn't address, which was really, just to orient you, I know this is small. So this is Route 9, and this is Pine Woods Road. I call this the former Grand Union, feeds plus, empty building. And then this, of course, is the new Mavis building. So we focused mostly on the Mavis building and the entrance and so forth, and we, we did discuss pedestrian circulation in the facility. You know, that was a big concern of everyone's-
Actually, you did everything sort of to the west of this area is all been approved. We decided to sort of hold off on this just because-
On the eastern portion.
Didn't know what you were gonna be doing.
You're right. So we're back to talk to you about new architecture for the existing buildings and to discuss some changes in this area. So what's been going on is the water meter pit, all the septic is installed, all the water lines are installed. And that was really the focus up here on Pine Woods Road where the water meter pit is. We would like to propose, in this area, we had discussed a stamped or a striped walkway in that area for pedestrians. And so obviously, we would like to make that formidable or a sidewalk, a true ADA sidewalk in this area. We had had preliminary discussions with Tad, I was hoping she was here tonight, but she's not, on some changes that she wanted to make that she thought would be beneficial to the project up by Building 4. So if you recall, Building 4 is kind of tweaked a little bit, and I think that they probably installed it that way because there's a septic system in the back. So it's not, you know, at 90 degrees like we all like to see. And this parking lot, the way that was constructed is it was narrower here on the south end. And then as you moved towards Pine Wood Road, it stayed parallel to the existing roadway, and that was sort of tweaked. It looked unbalanced. So she had suggested lining up the parking spaces so it's actually parallel to the building, and then filling in this triangular space with green space. So it made a lot of sense. So we thought that it was a good idea. So I'll give her credit for that, and that's something that we are proposing here. But the, the big change really is the architecture for the buildings. So that's what we're mostly here to talk about tonight. So I'll start with, this is gonna be Building 4, which is the building in the back, which is closest to Pine Woods Road. So this is the vacant building right now. And what's going to occur, there's kind of a shift on the property. So if I didn't tell you this, the applicants also bought the former Ruth Masuda building. So that's a part of this application. I know, it's just, it's a minor little thing that I just wanted to, to bring up. So we're gonna talk about that tonight. So the tenants that are in that building, the Verizon and a barber shop, they're gonna move back to this building. And so they're re-cladding this building, same architect. We're trying to use components of the Mavis building so there's a consistency and a theme throughout the site, creating a true front entrance. And because this building is a little tweaked, they're also proposing to create an entrance on the end, on the south end, so it really gives it a face, and it doesn't look like it was just stuck there. So we provided you with the floor plan just to get a sense of what it might look like inside, and that would be a four-tenant building, a space for four tenants. The second building is Building 3 where feeds plus is. So this would get a pretty significant modification to the front. Again, trying to tie in some of the themes of the Mavis building and using some of those barn doors components as well. And then lastly, and probably most, the biggest modification is, this is the, the Ruth, I call it the Ruth Masuda building, but this is the building that's on Route 9. So Emergency 1, as everyone knows, is up on the hill in the back, and they're gonna move down into this building as part of this application. This is a pretty striking difference. I think the architect was trying to incorporate some components of the stone because it's closest to the road, and I think it's a pretty good collection of materials that you see, you know, throughout Hyde Park. So we're here tonight really to talk about the three new architecture for the three new buildings or the three existing buildings, and then the modifications that we're proposing to the site up by Pine Woods Road. So the changes to the striping and the sidewalk. Two, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, no.
Just two things that I want to note, and Neil and I can go over this with you. We do need to apply to the ZBA as part of this application. So one of the variances-
We need, we need, I'll jump in here. We need two variances, and I'm gonna grab the walk-around. Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do, exactly.
So a little bit of a redux on the historic variance again?
Oh, my gosh. So our belief in taking a look at this is that Buildings 3 and 4 are blocked by Building 2, the new building and the Masuda building, from whether you're here, 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 or here. So we don't have to worry about 60,000 here, but we do here.
I forgot about that, and I'm the one who raised the issue. The reason why, I guess, I forgot is, I forget the variance is specific to the structure, not to the site.
Correct.
Are you adding to the structure, cubic feet?
We, we're going, we're not going away from a flat roof in order to comply with the flat roof. And now we all of a sudden have a volume that exceeds. It's about 60-
Similar to when they put the roof on the Mavis.
Yeah, it's 63,078.
Merciful heavens.
So the other variance we need is, as we started looking at the parking, we believe we need 146 spaces, and we only have 140. Because we, we lost a few spaces along the way.
Right. Tradition of landscaping.
That's kind of where, where we are. We're not-
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You don't need a variance for parking. Parking is, they're not standards or guidelines, and the planning board can vary anything within 108-4 point, all of it.
We'll make note of you then.
Okay.
In other words, we're allowed to vary standards such as that that are in 108. It's not, it's not a bulk. That's a bulk regulation, 60,000 cubic feet, so I can't do that.
We have, as you know, we had a lot of fun with scale last time around.
Yes.
And so we, you know, squeezed right up against it. We have two tax lots here right now. There are two tax lots.
Let's point out that the Masuda parcel, there were two parcels created by a judge, basically. They weren't subdivided in terms of what the planning board would take action on. They were done, set eight separate tax parcels because it was part of the equitable distribution by the judge during their, their legal fight. However, the, the Masuda's site was always served by one water line that comes in off Pine Woods, I believe. It uses the same septic system, et cetera. So I'm gonna turn this over for discussion to Ms. Palador for a moment. But there is a way of looking at this, to us, that you already exceed scale, that the lot really shouldn't be, it shouldn't have been parceled off the way it was. In other words, it's not a true subdivision, and so you already exceed scale. So you would just be seeking a special use permit for any increase beyond what the base scale is of the Masuda building plus everything else and through there.
That, that was one way of looking at it. So we wanted the applicant to provide us with a narrative.
Microphone, please.
Saying that was one way that we were looking at the scale issue. And so we wanted the applicant to confirm that that's how they had applied because they did apply for a special use permit for expansion.
For non-conforming.
For expansion of scale as a non-conforming use for other expansions.
Ms. Moss thinks that's probably a good way to apply as well.
I mean, we, we are, the bottom line is, we're sort of agnostic as to path. You know, the other thing I looked at was 108-4.3, adaptive reuse increase, a permit for an adaptive reuse increase, just like that. Just for the building. Because it focuses on the building. And I would say that now we're contributing to the historic architecture of the area by doing the building the way we're doing, and therefore we fulfill the ability to increase up to 50% our scale of that building.
So you, you decide how you want to proceed?
Yeah.
And just let us know when we'll review it with Tad.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is, as you pointed out, yeah, we're, we're pretty flexible because the deed from the Hyde Park Shopping Center, Inc., to Masuda was 1965. And as a result, I believe you had zoning in place. So the question is, that deed, there's some questions about, I think, in of itself, right?
They did not have zoning in place in 65. They had subdivision law. That's it.
But same, that's what I meant. So I think the easiest path for us that we'd like to do is withdraw the special permit, submit for the use, the permitted use, adaptive reuse increase.
We think, we thought you still needed the special use permit because even if you consider that lot part of the parent parcel, you were expanding the other buildings slightly, right? Isn't that what?
There's no physical footprint extension, but the volume is increased because of the addition of the roof.
So that's the special use permit. You would still have the special use permit, but not for the expansion on scale, just for the expansion of the cubic volume.
So let me ask a question. Is the town comfortable with the path that Tad had suggested with the special permit? We've already applied for the special permit. Is that something that you-
No, Tad, Tad thought you applied for the special permit. There was no narrative accompanying this. So we were trying to sort out what your path was. And so maybe we just need to have an offline discussion.
Okay. Our path was that we were applying for that, you know, the 50% expansion, which is something that's permitted.
The goal here is, of course, to remove, to merge the plots so that it's part of the, the original parent parcel again. And-
So we can't, if we're counting it as, if we're counting the Masuda lot as part of the original parent lot, then it's not in a 50% expansion because it's just part of it already.
Right.
But you would need the special use permit for any other expansions on the site. So I think we just need to have a conversation.
Yeah, let's have, we'll definitely have it offline. The issue here, really underneath all of it, is we have to deliver a building and open up while we have another application going. So we don't want to do anything that impedes the ability to get our CO.
And we don't want to tell you how to go forward because there are multiple paths. So we need you to tell us, but we'll talk about the pros and cons.
I just want to put it on the record, just so everyone understands what Neil is, just take it one step further. What he's talking about is, we have to deliver Mavis to me.
No, 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 no. I understand your trepidations before we go on too far and say too much on the record. I understand your trepidations.
Very good.
It's, I, I believe in my discussions with Ms. Moss, I know, which is, I think, her preferred, but let's just have an offline meeting and discuss.
We'll do that. Okay.
Because she has no desire to do a stop, anything.
Okay, good. Yep, we just need to, wanting to-
We don't want to make anyone on any other floor in the building hesitant to do things either.
Okay.
You just want something in the file-
Oh, right.
And unique, and so that we, she feels comfortable moving forward.
And our goal is, in theory here, is, once we have that conversation, and just to make sure the board's okay with it, is, we would probably fi, sorry, we would probably, I don't have anyone yelling at me. We would probably file with the ZBA since we already know we need variances anyhow. And given how we've previously worked, I think the expectation would be is, we'll file that so it's there. Everyone knows it's there. We're working towards that. And then we'll process through Seeker with you, bounce over there, come back to you, and finish.
I mean, that's, the truth of it is, is that we would, we want to see the original parent parcel there. I can't state enough that when a judge just arbitrarily says, we're gonna draw these lines and give some, some parking and give you this building, without understanding the underlying issues such as conveyance of waters, septic, et cetera, that's just something that we don't have to recognize, quite frankly, because it's just a tax parcel to us that makes any sense to you. So at any rate, therefore, we'll let the rest of the discussion tonight be on architecture and sort of site-specific features, waiting to have our offline meeting. And then once we have the offline meeting, we have our path forward, then we'll go ahead and type the action at the next meeting and circulate and all that stuff. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes. Could I just ask one quick-
It has to be type 1, as we know.
Yes.
If I could just ask one question. So the board, then, is in agreement that I don't have to apply to the ZBA for the parking? That's something that we can discuss with you.
Yeah, because parking, unless, unless Ms. Palador disagrees with me, it's like the lighting. So lighting is, so in our code, the lighting height of poles, which is 20 feet or 16 feet for pedestrian uses, we used to say that they needed a variance for that. And then when we did Stop and Shop, the attorney for Stop and Shop said, no, those are standards within zoning, which you're allowed to vary based on unique aspects of the property. So we've never sent anybody back for a variance for height because it's not in the bulk regulations. Similarly, parking, it says very clearly they're guidelines only. They're not inviolable standards that would have to be varied by the ZBA. So for us, it's just a matter of us saying, they don't have six stalls, slots they apparently need based on, and I know you would have calculated that based on both retail and service, I'm guessing, inside there. Since you're redoing buildings that we don't have all multiple tenants for, all we can do is kind of do our best guessing that you're going to get toward as close to the guideline as possible. So, no, you don't need to have a variance for that.
And then with respect to the building volumes, do you agree-
Yep, you still need one of those, sorry.
But do you agree that-
It's a bulk reg.
We only have the one building.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so everyone's in agreement?
That's what I think.
That makes sense, but Ted is gonna be the ultimate governor.
Okay, so I'll check with her before I submit, then.
Okay.
It's, it's fairly de minimis effort to include the other two buildings. I just want to make sure that we're doing it in one.
Yeah, let's talk to Ted about that. When we do the offline meeting, let's talk to Ted about that, too.
We can, I mean, I thought I had lost that argument on Seeker type 2 last go-around, so I'm more than willing to retrieve it.
I was, I mean, we can talk about Seeker. In this case, it doesn't look like you're, I'm confused. Are you rebuilding Emergency 1, or is, you're just re-cladding and putting a new roof on?
Re-cladding. All the walls are, all the exterior walls are staying.
All the buildings you're doing now.
Correct.
That's what I thought.
You're gonna change the roof or you're not on the Masuda?
They are.
We are.
You are.
But the exterior walls on the three buildings-
Right, you're gonna be, the footprint's gonna be seen.
Are not gonna change. Correct. Yep.
I mean, I'd love to take the position it's type 2 exempt less than 4,000 square feet of new growth, square foot of non-residential. I mean, was it 22 or 26?
I mean, if what you're adding is less than 4,000 square feet, then it would be type 2, so.
That's, that's fine with me. Okay.
Good. Any other colloquy right here, right now, before, let's go ahead and start with the consultants. Mr. Sotero, any comments?
Well, I'm gonna put together a letter, but, you know, we're talking, you know, minor things, some, some clarifications on curbing, crosswalks, you know, handicapped ramps. We gonna have any new building-mounted lights? I don't know if Kelly's gonna have any new lights on the building.
Yeah, they're the same gooseneck lights that are on Mavis, the same ones.
You know, Joe can just go put those on. And so, I mean, there's, there's, there's just some small things. You got the sidewalks. Seems like everything, you know, is tied in together. The only thing that I'll ask here is that, are the, are the existing septics okay for 3 and 4? The only reason I ask that is because I know for the Mavis, I think that you stole, I don't wanna use the word stole capacity, but for lack of a better word, you stole capacity, I believe, from the former Amish market or Grand Union building. Is that right?
So what we did was, there were existing seepage pits in the area underneath of the garden, the town center. And we added seepage pits. So there were additional seepage pits that were added in there because there are two that were pretty much unusable because they're underneath of Route 9, you know, they're too close to Route 9. I gave you a letter for Building 4 from Joe regarding Building 4 because the Verizon and the barber shop are gonna be moving over there. There's an existing septic system. For the Ruth Masuda building- For the Ruth Masuda Building, we have new seepage pits that we want to put in just to the north of the, of that building where that parking lot is, right? Oh, boy.
So those weren't, those weren't put in as part of the Mavis project?
No.
They didn't on the side?
It wasn't their parcel.
Oh, duh.
Yeah. So.
Oh, but, no, but for some reason I thought that the sewer went over onto the.
It did. So her sewer goes out the back of her building and then it goes over into where the seepage pits are now. But that isn't, we can't continue to permit that because the volume isn't there, the capacity isn't there for the volume.
So you're going to need county health department approval for emergency one?
Yep, and we already did deep tech.
Did you change anything on your type, type 2 consideration, if they need health department approval or?
So I mean, we'll consider.
I mean, we'll have to think about it. So that's all.
We already did the deeps and the perks. So those were done with.
Soils are great there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Joe already has a design that I think he submitted to Jason. That's under review. And with respect to water, Dutch's County Water and wastewater are already approved and it's been installed as the water. Yeah, yeah. So there'll be new seepage pits.
Okay, that's just for.
Just for emergency one.
And where is the septic for Building 3? Does three and four utilize the same?
Right here.
So they both use the same one?
Yeah, there's a, there's a field back, or seepage pits back there.
So, okay. I didn't go through everything, but so you said there was something in there from?
He did a letter, but we can give you, if you need something else, we can give it to you.
But three and four, I assume aren't going to require health department approval because it's existing.
Correct.
You know, now they might, you know, as part of the review of like E, E1, they may ask Joe to prove this existing system's not like failing or something, but whatever.
They may. Yeah, Jason's been out a lot for this.
Whatever they require, they'll require.
Okay.
So I mean, you know, from like a site standpoint, there's very like minimal site work. So we'll have some, you know, minor comments and I'll get that letter out early next week. Are we going to have a handicap space for Building 3? I just have to look at that. I'm not saying that, well, it's kind of a separate building, so I don't know if we. You have, I think you have, I think there's one for Building 4, so.
We addressed the handicap parking for the site as a whole. There isn't one there. It might have just slipped through the cracks, but we can add, we should be able to add a spot there. So add one more space we're going to need that we're short because we have to take that for the unloading area.
That's it, really? Oh, the only, I mean, what I'm going to also say is Joe is like relying, which is fine, that this is an amendment of site plan approval. So on, on Joe's first page, I'm just going to ask that, you know, he put down the, the date of the original approval for Town Center and also to list, you know, the drawings that were part of that approved set.
To reference.
So that when he refers to, you know, match like the lighting details on the original approval, it's all right there on the, you know.
Sometimes what we do is I take the, the cover sheet of the approved set and slip it in there. That's actually signed by everyone. So we can also do that, whatever you want to do.
I mean, that's okay too. I mean, it's fine. Just, I just want to be able to, so that if somebody pulls this out, they can easily cross-reference.
Sure.
Back to the original approval. So that's all. I'll get, I'll get something out.
Thank you. Ms. Paladaro, any comments? Additional comments?
Additional comments? You may have mentioned this when I was conferring with Neil. The table on the cover page leaves some blanks in Building 2 for future uses.
That's, you know, that's the Grand Union.
It says retail. Oh, okay. It just doesn't clear why there's three blanks spots. I don't think.
There's the three empty table. I'm not sure why they're like that, but I can ask Joe. It might have been like a copy and a paste, but I see what you're saying.
Okay, I just want to be, I just want to make sure that, you know, the number that he gave is for Building 2.
It is. Yeah.
And then once, once we receive the landscaping and the light details and the sign details, we'll be able to circulate to county planning for comment.
Thank you. Let me start to my right. Comments, Ms. DiNapoli?
The three buildings, while they're remaining, the exterior walls, are you gutting the entire interior of all three?
Yes.
Number four in particular, because it's at an angle, it really does interfere a lot with deliveries and the way you can line up, most importantly, parking. Is there any way number four could be straightened out?
It can. Yeah, it can.
You're shaking your head. I, I understand. But while you're, you're spending all this money to redo, I would think something that could improve the flow with parking. And, and I always was under the impression, and I could be wrong, that when you are redoing or infilling, that that is when you should be addressing these issues.
We're, we're, we're not going to demo the building and move it. We can't do that. It's just, it would be completely cost prohibitive. And further, just to kind of add to that, the back of that building, there's a hill right here. So we would be cutting, putting a retaining wall. There's, there's curtain drains back there. There's the septic system. So the, the sewer lines come out of the back of the building. They go east, then they come south and they wrap around the building and that septic system is back there. So there's a number of underground utilities. That, that building would be demoed, you know, if the town had sewer, we could go vertical, you know, then that building could be demoed. But it's just, it's really not, the, the cost to demo a building alone is pretty.
Been there, done that. It was just a question.
Yes.
This is the historic district and as with Mavis, I will ask again, this is supposed to have tourist-based business. I don't see any. And that has me greatly concerned. When you were all before us with the Mavis, you know, you made it clear, the Knicks made it clear that they had to get started with something. And, and that was understandable. They needed income. And it was never promised, but it was acknowledged that this is a tourist-based area. And I don't see a barber shop, a feed store, or Verizon answering any of those questions besides then you have the emergency one.
So these are existing tenants that are in your downtown that have stayed with you through all your downturn.
I understand that.
You'd like them to vacate your town center? I mean, I think that's a, that's a harsh statement from an economic development standpoint to come at. These, we are relocating from one part of our property to another part of our property, three tenants in your downtown that have stayed with you as a town through everything.
And I'm not saying that they should go away.
I'm going to disagree to disagree.
I am not saying they should go away. I am saying that in the reconfiguration, some, some semblance should be given for tourist-related business.
Tell us who to call and we'll call them. If you, just, I mean, you know, we're.
That is not my job. My job is to read the code and to state back what it says according to the code. And, and I am really very concerned because when you were before us the last time, it was very clearly, yes, we understand. We understand that this is that district. But we have, this is the project we have. It's the only one we have to get started. So I'm saying that as you're looking at three and four in the reconfiguration, there should be some type of tourist business to be considered.
I don't, I don't want to, it's the holiday season. I think you made your point. We made our point on our views and, and.
Oh, I'm ready to move on.
And, and we, we understand. Look, we'd love it. We'd love to get that. Right now, what we're trying to do is keep existing tenants that have been here happy, satisfied, and, and continuing in the community for those that they've been serving for decades. Your point, I think, is a great point for anyone else who's listening in the audience to know that Hyde Park is open for those kind of quaint types of ma and pa and smaller facilities and that you would do everything you could to make it quick and easy for them to re-tenant these buildings. I think that's a great point. I think that's a great point, and I think that's one that the community needs to hear. I think, you know, it's, it's consistent also with what we always say in the economic development world. Get shovels in the ground and more people will come out. So you've got tenants here who are relocating in into new buildings, encouraging our property owner to spend more money and give the TI, tenant improvement cost, into them to keep them here. And I think it's, it's the beginning of the great tipping story that you've been looking for.
And Neil, I totally agree.
It's your Malcolm Gladwell point.
I don't disagree. I was not suggesting at all that they go away, the other present tenants. I was just talking about in addition. But to move on to the emergency one, the architecture of that building is very attractive. And I think that would blend in very nicely, especially with the, I still call it the Stattenberg House.
Yeah, yeah.
Goes very nicely. Three and four. I was disappointed in the design.
Connect very strongly with the Mavis. With Kupola's. More Kupola's, yeah. Oxford's known as the city of spires. Hyde Park's on its way to the city of, you know, the town of Kupola's.
It'll be soon to the town of Saki.
I think possibly relooking at what's happening with emergency one could figure into three or four. It's bringing in the stone, which Hyde Park is known for. You know, that, that would go. With the type of material you have, the hardy board type, the fiber cement that you have on Mavis, that could blend very nicely together. But it will be a nice improvement.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it for now.
Mr. Oliver?
One of the things I like about being on this board is we're all entitled to our own opinions. And we still like each other after the meeting.
Yes.
But I, I think, you know, this shopping center is very complex, unique shopping center. And our situation, Hyde Park's very unique and complex with no town sewer. So I just want to thank you guys for all the work you've done on, on Mavis and, you know, bringing to us three new buildings that are, you know, just going to keep improving our town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dexter?
I'm happy and surprised to see you back so quickly. And I do agree that once you start seeing those construction fences up, I think all the traffic on Route 9 starts to stand up and go, maybe we should start looking into it. So all I can say is I hope that this brings even more success. I'm noticing that nothing's being done with Building 2. Is that correct?
Correct.
And by relocating Emergency 1, I'm a little confused. Emergency 1 shares their current place with at least one other tenant?
There was another tenant in there, the Center for Physical Therapy, and I think they moved somewhere else in the town.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So Emergency 1, it looks like they're in a larger space than they're in.
That's, that's what I was getting, yeah.
Yeah, they're actually in similar space.
Okay, the square footage is roughly the same?
It's hard because so much of that building is now vacant.
Okay.
The existing building where Emergency 1 is now.
But what I see what's happening is that by doing this reconfiguration and re-cladding, this goes way beyond re-cladding. To me, I think this is really awesome.
Thank you.
I really do like that not all three buildings are barns. I like that the two, like, outbuildings are barns and the front one is looking very historic-looking. But it looks like now you're freeing up that whole back section if you need to. Who knows? That could become a tourist-based something. We could, I know that the owners of the building are working closely with the town on their downtown initiative. To me, this sets you up to do something in the back, perhaps quite large, with a sewer.
We would only hope.
So, you know, I mean.
It's right back to what's behind the McDonald's, right?
Right.
You continuously have a run there.
Exactly. So you've, you're, to me, this, I didn't quite get it until you explained where everything was. I went, oh. Now that kind of sets you up for.
Hopefully.
All kinds of possibilities, which is great, which is what I know the owners were really looking for. So anyway, I just, to me, it just all kind of came together. And I'm really, I'm really psyched. This is really great. And you've answered my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pickett?
I like what's going on. Really appreciate the work you folks have put into it. I like your layout and designs. We did have discussions about all the Kupolas, but I think sitting in back like they do with the, no, I like them too. Both combined with a design of what's going to be Emergency 1. I like it. The only question I have is, now when you have the Mavis in there and you also have Emergency 1, is there enough parking right in that area or are you going to have to designate?
That's a good point because as everybody was talking, I'm looking at the site plan and that's something that we should discuss.
Made you something like have employee parking that's more out in the middle to allow your customers for both?
Or reservation. I mean, I don't know. Have you thought about even, you know, reservation of spaces for like, you know, Emergency 1? Because, boy, they're going to be like busy, busy there. And I'm just thinking if people come in for the Mavis and start to use some of that parking, then, you know, the E1 folks would have to park somewheres else and, you know, E1. E1 is kind of, you really want to be close to the building.
They're sick. They need a short walk.
You actually raised issues that the owners of Emergency 1 had raised. So we kind of flushed this out with them before coming here. We are going to create these parking spaces that are in the back of the building that are actually there because everyone parks there now.
They're just going to designate them?
They're not utilized formally, so we'll say.
Thank you.
At, at the moment.
At the moment.
Because Mavis isn't there.
Yeah, so what, what we've discussed with them, with Emergency 1, is that this is going to be for people who want to come and visit Emergency 1. So they're going to come around and they can come in the door. He would like to require all of his staff to park in the center of the facility. And then we've identified this area here with them, which is just to the, it's hard because this property line is here, but just to the north of the building, that would be for a loading area for a ambulance. If an ambulance came in, they could park here, bring the person into the building and then back up and leave again. So the.
Actually, most of the ambulances don't come here. They'd bring them out.
Yeah.
We know, we know.
Oh, I see. People go in there.
They realize they're worse off than what they were and they say, you've got to go to the hospital, the real hospital right now. It's not for emergency clinic type stuff.
This is that view that you see if you're inside of the parking lot and you're looking, you're looking out. So people would come out and go in the door in the front.
Okay. So are you saying that there's, so there's a front entrance along Route 9?
Right here.
And then there would also be some of the way to go in because?
Here's the door. Sorry. This is the way that they're going to go in.
Right there.
Is here. Yep. So this is that parking lot.
So there's only one way in and one way out of Emergency 1?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Pickett, you were the one asking the questions. Sorry. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
The parking is an issue, but I noticed that you'd added the spots behind what we'll call just the Masuda Building.
Right.
Yeah, and just really striping what is, is currently there, but not.
I assume those are going to be for employees because I'm not sure that patients would know to park back there.
I think they will because when you come in off of Route 9, you're kind of forced to, you know, you have to kind of go around and come back in. And so you're going to see those spaces in the back.
Am I right that you've, you've, the parking, I'm starting to look at the site plan, the parking that's just to the south of the freestanding sign that's along Route 9, so that would be in through here, did you pull some of this back to add in a little bit more landscaping, it looks like? Because if I looked at the site plan correctly, here's, here's the town sidewalk, I'll call it, along Route 9, but there's also now a sidewalk that would go in fr, well, I guess it's already there. But you've, you've extended the sidewalk into the parking area.
Yeah, we're extending the sidewalk so they can walk into Emergency.
Looks nice that way. Looks nice that way. Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, what's, what's your dream timeframe on this? Wonder would you like to have this, you know?
So that's, you actually raise a good question because this is a bit of a juggling act. We would like to do something that's a little bit different than the normal sequence of events in the town. And we do need to get Building 4 gutted and improved so that kind of everyone can make the shift. So we were hoping to concurrently with your approval, submit an application to the building department so that they could concurrently review the plans for Building 4. So as soon as this board approves their plan, the building inspector could somewhat concurrently submit a building permit. could somewhat concurrently submit a building permit for that building, and we could start to get the move going, because those tenants in Emergency One's new space have to get moved out, and then we have to gut that space and move them in. So we're hoping to really commence that construction by March. You know, that would be our goal.
You need to work with the building inspector, as you know, on that, because that's beyond our...
Yes. And I should say that we have had this conversation with him. So he is willing to accept and review, you know, concurrently with the planning board, knowing our sequence of events.
The other option, of course, is if there, if there ends up being a holdup somewhere else on the plan, you can phase Building Four so it gets signed separately ahead of, ahead of the other buildings on the map.
Yes. Yep. Let's just hope that we can...
Have you done that before, Neil, on any jobs in the past?
No comment. Taking a fit on that.
So, and, you know, we're also trying to turn over, maybe, you know, we're trying to open that building at the same time, on or about, I think it's the end of March is the commitment date. So lots, a lot is going to happen in the next few months.
Yeah, no, I'm hoping. Now, you guys are aware that the buildings as they exist now, sometimes water flowed through them?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted you to...
Yeah, that did become...
Maybe the curtain drains in the back or not exactly what they...
Seemed to be, yes. There's actually, as part of the prior site plan approval that you granted, Joe worked with Pete on coming up, I know I'm going to do this in my face, on coming up with a drainage system that goes behind this building.
Oh, that's right.
So that's going to be installed as...
Okay, no, that's good. I was unaware of that.
If it wasn't already installed, yeah, there's a...
That's a good point, because I know years and years ago, you know, Ruth and I were out there.
She always says that about me years and years ago.
You know, Ruth, Ruth, you know, did have, you know, drainage issues behind that whole...
And over here.
Yes, and over there too.
That's where Pete, I remember her coming to editing. But you, you did approve a new drainage, you know, system that's back here.
Did go behind too?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Behind Four. Yep.
Good.
Okay, that's everything I had. Now, feel the same way about progress you're making in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weiser?
So I apologize for reading a little bit of stage fright.
That's okay.
First, I'm thrilled that you're looking to improve the exteriors of these sites. Besides attracting new businesses in a critical part of town, it's going to bring energy and vision to a once-blighted area. I am probably repeating what my colleagues have discussed in the past, but I think a reiteration of stated goals for the development and improvement of Hyde Park can never hurt. All future structures, whether refacing or new construction, should keep an eye on the larger goal of Hyde Park's revitalization objectives, which benefit the town, its residents, tourists, developers, and businesses. And that being said, it's why architecture matters. You did an amazing job with the Mavis Tire Center. It's a stately-looking barn that could belong to one of our, belong to one of our historic sites. But what doesn't make sense is to repeat that style with Buildings Three and Four, and here's why. I think what does make sense is to take a look at the zoning standards for the Crossroads Core District. If we see that same type of development in Town Center North, there'll be a visual cohesion between the two areas. For one and one-and-a-half-story buildings, I would look to Italianate Queen Anne, but without the decorative trusses, and even Second Empire as inspiration. I know Georgian architecture isn't listed in the zoning recommendations, but it does lend itself, itself to a use, to a use as a business. In Section 108-5.11.1, there's a photo of a two-story building on Page 64 that could be adapted to a single or one-and-a-half-story building. I think this is an exciting moment in Hyde Park's present and future, and it's the perfect opportunity to telegraph to the world what we want to become. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That leads back to me. And I thought I was going to be the mean heavy tonight. So I love, I, let me say I love, I think the building, the improvements to the architecture for Emergency One are fantastic. Happy to see them go in. I just need to really, to point out, I'm going to put it more simply. We're trying to create a village, not a farm. There's way too much barn in here, sorry. This, the fake barn doors, it makes me crazy. It's, I don't, I don't see a reason to carry this, you know, mom, pop, kettle theme everywhere through here. This weird eyebrow thing next to the other two gables looks odd to me. It's like it's got a lazy eye instead of, I don't know how to describe it. I'm sorry. Architecture is very personal, but...
Robert A. Sermon is crying right now.
Well, that...
Because Mr. Schingle style.
I don't, these three don't seem to match to me. That noted, I'm actually okay with this as well. It's just, this is, I'm going to sound like Sharon Prano Boko, I just realized. Your barn is too Barney. No. We had a comment that your brick was too bricky for the, in at Bella Field, the hotel. But I think there's a way to modify this so it looks, again, Ann was talking about taking a look at the pictures in the Crossroads Core. Everything is a box. You can clad it any way you want to, make it look however you want to. I would just like to see this look not repeated, because we already have it at the Mavis. And again, I think it's fine to have one in there, because it's supposed to be a remnant of something. And you already, you were reflecting the stables, the old stables from the Rogers Estate that were, where there's, next to McDonald's. So you have some rural things in there, but if we get too rurally, then it doesn't start looking like it was part of a downtown area, a village area. So I'd like for you to reconsider this. And I think that's what's building upon Ann, that, in particular, that area. The other thing that's on note, it's on the site plan, and I think Pete was alluding to this, the sidewalks are definitely an improvement in the northeast area, but the code requires between all uses. And there's no sidewalk that I can recall seeing, or even crosswalk from three to four or four to three, take your pick. There may be some crosshatching or something that could be shown, but there needs to be a way to establish that path. I'm absolutely fine with not seeing anything for Building Two right now, because you don't know what you're doing with that. And these are going to be lovely improvements. It's going to be a more cohesive area. I'm kind of with Chris on that. You need to label, we don't have dimensions shown on any of these. We need dimensions. You, I could be wrong, but I believe this is more than 100 feet. If it is, as you're, you may need to, our code says you're supposed to be an articulated front. If it's more than 100 feet, you may need to poke something out a little ways. I don't know if it's, I don't want you to have to think about the foundation, because we're not doing that. But maybe there's a way to add something structurally to kind of give you a little bit of depth and dimension on, if it's more than 100 feet. We don't have elevations, so I don't know. Something, just something, a boxed-out area or something where the window, something, just to give it, again, so it's less flat. We need to have a calculation. I assume that with the reorientation of the parking for Building Four, with the more green space, that this would satisfy the landscaping kind of requirements. I think you had plenty of landscaping the overall site, so I'm going to go back and check. Assuming that we're okay, you're adding even more, then that's a good thing. We don't have a landscaping plan yet, or lighting, et cetera, enough to refer to county planning. But I know this was really just to get you started to discuss the architecture. And that's why I didn't mean to be mean or heavy, but I just think we need to kind of rein in the whole farm complex there thing a little bit.
You know, yeah, and I think in the architect's defense who aren't here, you did something that worked, that was...
I know.
So you have a, you have a...
I'd have gone the same way. Tell it again.
And they don't have the privilege of, you know, coming and hearing. So...
Right. And I will add, at first it seemed, well, it's cohesive with Mavis, but then it doesn't relate to the front building. So I think this would be, this building needs to kind of be the transition building of getting...
Those were more of storefront windows?
Yes, 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 yes.
Just so I can clearly get back to him. So Building Four, really, the front dormers, we'll say the three dormers, don't necessarily match.
Well, it's the winking one, the lazy eye, like I said, the kind of...
And then some articulation in the front of that building.
Yeah. And then for the, for the rest, just think about it being more traditional and style rather than the, because those are fake barn doors anyway, I believe.
They're not operable. Correct, yeah.
Not operable. So, and I know, and I'm, I feel a bit terrible, because I think one of the Knicks, one of the senators really likes that look, but it might be too heavy or too much of it for this area. Again, we're trying to think about a walkable downtown village, not, you know, a farm. Otherwise...
What if we pulled from the Emergency One building for...
That's kind of what I was thinking about.
You have two styles.
And to echo, to echo, the, a visual echo of the front building, maybe more back there. I think that's what Diane was saying as well, is to maybe re-envision it with more stone, more board and bat, and something like that that comes from the front building. Because that way we then start to have more cohesion throughout the site.
Mm-hmm.
That makes any sense.
Yeah, I just want to give him a clear direction so he can come back with...
You know, architecture is one of those things, like Chris says, we all have our opinions. And in truth, if I saw all these go up, if they'd been here for a while, I would say, oh, that's kind of cute. But I would have gone kind of corny too. But, you know, if it was already up, it wouldn't be anything. But if we have a chance to kind of, as I said, rein it in first, I'd like to do that. That's really it. This seems like it could be fairly easy. I assume we're going to reaffirm Seeker as we go through this process, because you're actually doing improvements aesthetically to everything. And we do need to meet with Tad just to discuss the path forward, and also to see what she thinks about the other two buildings in terms of the cubic volume. Thanks for catching that. I, be honest with you, I've been, I looked at the buildings last week, and I've been immersed in the enclave and in at Bella Field more than anything else, and doing phone calls back and forth. So I didn't really go through and do a code thing on this. But I would have caught it ultimately, so it's better that we do it early.
Okay.
Better that we do it early. So, anyway, so do you want to set, do we, do you want to get placeholder something? Or do you want to take time to revise the architecture? Get any new landscaping plans, lighting, et cetera?
I think the offline, we can have that offline meeting, for sure.
I think we could have the offline meeting, but we can come back in a month. Because within the next two weeks, we should be able to address these comments.
And I'd like to go ahead and set the online meeting up as soon as possible. I don't know what Tad's schedule is. Cynthia and I?
I can call Cynthia tomorrow and try to coordinate with you and setting it up.
Because I'm here, I'm, I'm gone next, I'm gone on the 27th and 28th, but otherwise I'm here the whole time.
Okay.
That's just in the city. I'm back pretty quickly.
Okay.
Going to meet some friends from out of town, so who are coming up. That's all.
Okay.
So just to summarize what you heard, I think everyone's delighted and thrilled that we're going to have, as Ann said, it's nice to have you back so fast.
Thank you.
It really is. And I don't think, I know there might have been some adversarial tone there for a moment. I think what Diana is just saying is, we want to make sure that we always bear in mind that we do, our future for economic development here pretty much is to increase tourism business at the same time. So it's like, keep it up, top most in your mind, as you said. Tell us who to call, and we'll get them there. But...
It's a collaborative effort.
We lack sewer. We know this. If you, I did discuss initially with Ms. Leibl, how our code pretty much cries out for a second story on, like, the Emergency One building. I want to note that because, even if they just say it's not going to be utilized, they have septic issues for what that second story would be. It prohibits it. You can't really even put it on, because you have seepage pits, which, as I like to point out, is really ancient technology, what we're talking about in sewer these days. It's like using an abacus instead of a, you know, calculator. I mean, really. So if we get that sewer in, then...
I'm glad you said that and not meant...
No, it's true, though. If we get the sewer in, we have tremendous opportunities to have highest and best uses on our structures. But right now, we're limited.
We can't go vertical.
And these are tenants who, as you said, stuck with thick and thin. Part of being business-friendly doesn't just mean saying, hey, welcome to new ones. It means supporting your existing ones. That noted, it's also, all these areas need to serve residents, too. It's just that we have more tourists going through nine than we do 9G. So I'm looking forward to seeing this go through. I can't wait to get to county planning. I think that they'll be happy to see the next revisions, et cetera. And I know that there was a little bit of concern about what we'll call a planning document, but it has not been adopted by the town, therefore it doesn't have any... Got me?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I just make one note? You cannot leave tonight, sir, without giving us the last new word, 2017. Pete and McCourty are sitting there. We're ready.
I'm ready for Google. I got Google ready.
Oh, my God. What did you say the other day? Use wonky or something? You used a word. I don't even know what it was.
Let them just schedule when they come back. Remember, they'll get two weeks. How about con tumely? C-O-N-T-U-M-E-L-Y. And it's not an adverb. How about, how about that being your last new word of the year?
What is it again?
It's one of my favorite words. And, oh, I've stumped Neil.
Oh, this is exciting.
What is it?
C-O-N-T-U-M-E-L-Y. And it's not an adverb. No. Go look it up. I just, I, the president of the community college, so, wanted to stump me and said, what is, she's called it fraudage. Anybody know what, it's frotage. Anybody know what that means?
Frotage?
The act of rubbing. If you take a piece of paper...
We don't want to go there.
Take a piece of paper over a penny?
All right, let's schedule this meeting.
That's fraudage.
Like gravestone, like headstone.
Yes, that's fraudage.
Heads up there.
That's fraudage.
Quick, quick question. Building Four has four tenants. Proposed?
It has four, it has four separate areas for...
And there's two tenants moving to it. And Building Three has two spaces with one tenant?
Correct.
So there's three potential tourist open spaces.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is Verizon definitely going back in the back?
Yes.
Great. When the two Knicks were here, they weren't sure for a variety of reasons. But the barber shop was. So that's great.
Yes.
And we're not allowed to discuss what might be going where Emergency One is. But I believe that there's, this looks like you might just be shifting around things, but there is a potential new tenant for the entire space, both what was the Center for Physical Therapy, as well as Emergency One back in that area. And fingers crossed that everything works well for it, because I know who it is.
Thank you. Are we, so are we going to move this action to one month from today?
Yeah, yeah. We were just going to slot you in on the calendar, because it's not a public hearing or anything, the 17th of January.
January 17th. Okay, very good.
In the meantime, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Great New Year for you, et cetera. And we'll see you in a month.
See you next year.
But we'll see before, some of us will see before that for the offline meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda tonight is Matthew Auto Sales. The applicants are here. I'm going to summarize as fast as I can, since they've been patiently waiting. We've, this, this site has been subject of numerous reviews. We last approved it to be an auto sales. The applicant installed the sidewalk and has done some other side improvements, but hasn't finished. In the meantime, there are two structures there, basically. They're connected by a five-foot hallway. There was a fire. There's been some damage. And in working with Mr. Westermeyer, the building inspector suggested that it would be easier in terms of trying to pass building code, that they severed the connection between the two buildings. When that occurred, he also said it would be easier to rebuild a portion of the top of the site that had been damaged. Right?
Correct.
And Ms. Moss and I, in an offline meeting, suggested that he make, work to make that site more symmetrical. So in essence, this is a very small, or it's substantial in the sense of it needs a building permit, but it doesn't really impact the site much. It actually improves it because of the way that Paul, Mr. Terrence has redesigned to make them both kind of more symmetrical, the structures where the windows are, et cetera. But we're required, because of where this is located, to refer this to county planning. So we have a resolution prepared to type the action, refer it to DC Planning, so we can get it going. And I prepared the resolution, so we didn't charge against escrow for you, like I said. I don't think there'll be any engineering review on this. So we're just, Ms. Moss wanted this recorded as formal part of the site plan process. That's why it's not being just kind of handled ministerially by Ms. Moss. So, do you want to add anything, Mr. Terrence?
I think you summed it up. I have nothing else to add.
Thank you. Any questions of the, for the applicant?
Just one. It states that it's a three-bedroom. I count two bedrooms. And is the den office the third?
It should have been labeled two-bedroom. I think, I have so many iterations of this thing, I think somehow I snuck in the wrong iteration.
It happens. It's just a...
It's been a one-bedroom, a three-bedroom, and planning it to two-bedroom.
But it's a two-bedroom with one office on top.
Supposed to.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicants? Yeah. It says two-bedroom apartment on one of the sets, and then it says three-bedroom on another cover sheet. So that's what we kind of figured. Any other questions?
Nope.
Who has this resolution tonight?
Are we going to ever see auto sales there? I mean, we've done a lot of work with you and, you know, nothing seems to come to fruition. Are you going to ever have an auto sales there, or just tenants, or what do you?
That's what we're trying to do, but every time we come up with something, we have difficulties, either with the building department, or, so we're trying to solve all these problems.
We do have an open, open building permit for the remodeling of the newer building. And, and Mr. Neshwat has framed it out and started the office space for the car sales. Like I said, it's an open building permit right now, that, working towards finishing. So he has taken steps toward that, but it's going probably slower than all of us would like to see.
When we first started, we started with the two phases. The first phase is the auto sales. But the building department suggested that we separate the buildings. That's why we put that on the post. And so we separate the buildings. That's why we're here now.
How's the store coming? The one used to be Krispy's.
That one is kind of what led us here. We submitted a building apart, a building permit and plans to, you know, Don Westermeyer. And in the review of that, in getting Tad